Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this Perth County Council meeting for Thursday, February 20. Warden Doug Kellum officially called this meeting's order. So clerk to note the starting time for nine oh two AM. We do have regrets today from councillor Wilhelm and councillor Kesenberg. However, we do have deputy warden Trantowski and councillor Orr joining us soon. Good morning. This time I'd like you to bow your heads for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on traditional land of the Anishnabi. We have longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indigenous, Metis, Inuit people who call it this territory home. As the county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. Does anyone have any peculiar interest to declare at this time? Seeing none, if it does arise throughout the meeting, please disclose at that time. Moving on to item five in our agenda, is there anything to add to the agenda?
Yeah, so through the warden, we do have one item to add. It'd be item fourteen point one closed. It's a matter pertaining to an identified law on individuals slash potential litigation under public works. So it'd be the only addition at this time.
Thank you. Counsel, any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I have a motion that reads as follows. February twentieth twenty five agenda to be approved as amended. Moved by councillor McDermott, second by councillor Higgins. All those in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to our consent agenda, there are eight items, I believe, in the consent agenda. Is there any items on the consent agenda that council would like to extract to discuss? Seeing none, I have a motion that reads as follows. That's consent agenda six point one, six point eight. And approved at February sixth twenty twenty five minutes. Moved by councillor Orr. Seconded by councillor Duncan. Questions or comments? All those in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to seven point one in our agenda. We do have a delegation that is coming for us today. And the delegate, I believe, is Alan Borson. Josh Borson, Josh Borson. And if they can come forward at this time, that would be great. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, warden. Different format, I'm not familiar with. This work is fine, I hope. Hopefully you can hear me well enough online. Thank you, warden and councillors, for taking the time this morning to speak with us. I'm actually joined today by a couple of members from our district grain committee as well in the gallery and one online who couldn't be here because her young daughter is not well this morning, unfortunately. But that would be our district chair, Matt Drummond. Our secretary treasurer, or rather, our secretary is online, Kane Plagen, and fellow farmer, Brian Barker. As mentioned, my name is Josh Borson. I'm currently just recently re-elected to be district director for Grain Farmers of Ontario for Perth County. Doing this for a little over six years now. I trust this morning you've all had the opportunity to read the correspondence that we sent in. It was brief, I will admit, but that hopefully gets the message across today of why we're here. It was a request from the Grain Farmers of Perth County that a representative of our local committee would have a seat on the Perth County Agricultural Working Group. As I understand it, from my conversations with others recently, is that this committee hasn't really been used extensively in the past by this council. Perhaps it's not that old either. I believe the bylaw was created in 2016, but in eight years, I don't know if it's done a great deal. And I think to some extent, this is a missed opportunity for council. I would like to think that the council could leverage the expertise and experience on there. And with that, we're seeking to be included as well. You know, to serve as a sounding board for council on policy more directly, I hope. I was speaking with fellow farmers from across the province. There are other municipalities that have very similar ag working groups or committees struck. Notably, Lampton, Oxford, and Chatham Cantor spoke with members from those regions. And those committees all have a more diverse group of people involved on them. They all have commodity organizations as well, like Grain Farmers of Ontario. Even some of them have some livestock groups included. And I think that this is a good precedent for Perth County to follow as well. Hopefully, objectively, I would like to see this committee or this group actually maybe provide more advice or guidance to council regarding land use planning, infrastructure investments, or even bylaw creation or impacts that are affected on farmers throughout the county, agriculture being the biggest industry in this county. And really, I think this is a winning strategy for council overall, because, you know, if we can try and head off some of these challenges that maybe come out of policy prior to them becoming an issue, this will work better for everyone involved. You know, I do want to highlight that there were some challenges, I think, from the official plan process most recently. And you would have seen maybe some contentious issues brought up by farmers of, you know, things that they didn't perhaps agree with. And I think had this committee been leveraged at that time appropriately, perhaps a lot of those could have been avoided or hopefully at least mitigated. I recognize that if we're talking about the official plan specifically, that there are provincial mandates that you're obligated to follow. There's, there's things outside of your control. But I think if those issues had been communicated prior to this process to the ag groups or ag community, a lot of that animosity could have been avoided. I feel that if we work together more collaboratively, that we discuss the plans and goals of this council and the county more broadly, you know, in terms of bylaw adoption, that we can... These challenges that we're experiencing don't have to become a symptom of the process, so hopefully we can avoid it. So to the matter at hand today and why I'm here, you know, the farmers of Perth County and the farmers of, you know, I represent every day, just as you all do as well, have asked us to come to become more involved locally in affairs of our municipality. And that's why we're here today and why you have seen that resolution that was carried unanimously with wide support at our recent meeting. It was held about a month ago at our annual meeting. And I had prior to that received several requests to speak to council on this matter personally. But rather than take that initiative alone without support of the farming community more broadly, I had asked the members of the farmers present that day at our meeting to come up with a resounding show of support. And that's what we're here today with, with that resolution you have before you. I do want to thank clerk Sager for pointing out that our resolution was maybe a little more forward than we're allowed to be in the way we, it may have come off as demanding, but I would say it's a request. We're requesting that we could be included in this. And the bylaw at question is three, five, four, five dash two thousand and sixteen. We're asking to be included as soon as practical in this committee involvement. And realistically, you know, in respect for time, I would look forward to any questions that councillors may have or council members may have.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Counsel open up the floor for first questions, comments, councillor Duncan?
Thank you, through you, warden. Josh, how many members are in District Nine?
How many farm members or how many?
Yeah, like how many members do you have in District Nine in the GFO?
I guess I'm afraid that that number I would have to get back to you on. It's...
On a ballpark?
Well, realistically, every farmer in Perth County that sells grain is a member of the organization.
Okay.
So you don't have, you can sell a ton of grain or four thousand tons of grain. You are a member of the Grain Farmers of Ontario.
And?
Your region abroad.
How would you guys go about appointing your representative if we were to pull one on the committee?
I think the district committee would sit together and come up with a good representative. As the director, some in the committee might say they'd like me to do that. But I think for succession and for the success of our organization, I think we'd actually try and appoint someone else from our group. We have a very, very good group of individuals. So our committee is made up of eight delegates and two alternates, it's called. So we have ten members to choose from and all very capable.
Thank you. Councillor Higgins?
Just some background on this committee. So in two thousand and sixteen, we had the Federation of Agriculture approach us and wanted to both getting together. That's how this all started. I remember them coming to do that one day in Outwood. So the idea of that was, was to share information. They were going to give us, keep us up to date what's going on in the farming community. And, and we were going to kind of keep them up to date what was happening here at council. It started out as a very strong committee and then it kind of fizzled out for a few years. Now it's finally come back. I guess at that time, we offered it or were suggesting it all through the farming organizations, the Federation, the Christian Farmers, the National Farmers, which I presume all of your members of the Grain Farmers are correct. Some, some way, they have to be to get some of the government stuff correct. So I see your side of joining. I see the other side too. How big is this committee going to get? You know, if we have the dairy, dairy producers, the pork producers, chicken producers, we're going to have like fifteen people around the table, just... Or maybe more or maybe less. I'm not really sure. I guess that's how the council needs to take into consideration. But I do understand, you know, what you are asking and what you want. I'm just not sure where I am quite yet, yet.
If I may, I'm... While I respect your point of view there, and certainly realistically, to some extent, we might be members of those organizations more broadly. Three farmers from across the county is a pretty small pool to sample in a lot of ways. And certainly, I respect the fact that you don't want a committee of twenty five people either. But if you're going to utilize it well, I think having good, strong voices at the table and, and more than just a handful is, is going to be also beneficial. I don't know how many times the committee meets in a year. And I would, like I mentioned, I'd like to see that committee become more successful and utilized by council if you, if you wish and if you can.
I was hoping Deputy Warden Trunkowski could maybe answer that. He is the chair of the Ag Steward Committee. Right now, I know they're meeting quite a bit. I know councillor Orr is as well. Maybe the team can...
Deputy Warden, you like to weigh in here?
Yeah, thanks, Warden Kellum, through you. So yeah, yes, I'm the current chair of the Ag Working Group. We're tasked, and we, we're tasked to meet quarterly. And at the start of this current term of council, our first meeting for this term was held in February of two thousand and twenty-three. And I can advise that we have exceeded the, the quarterly meeting rate substantially. We've been quite involved with the launching of the stewardship program. And that has taken a fair amount of our time, effort, and energy. We're looking at other aspects right now. We're currently tasked by council to review the forestry bylaw as it compares to the forestry bylaws with adjacent communities in southwestern Ontario. So we are quite active. We are quite engaged. Like I say, we're only tasked to meet quarterly. We're doing the best that we can with the time, time that we have available. And we're always speaking to consult with our other members, OFA, and the NFU and the Christian Farmers on a regular basis. So I guess to councillor Higgins' point, there, there is, there is some representation across the spectrum of the agricultural community. And we are, we are working diligently, diligently to address agricultural issues and provide advice and guidance to council with respect to the official plan. That that process was assigned to the planning department. And largely, the official plan work was done well in advance before my time starting as chair on the committee and starting on county council. So the current, the current term of this committee has kind of caught the tail end of the official plan. Things were pretty well, well underway by the time, by the time this committee started up this term. So those are my, if there's any questions, so be glad to take them.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Councillor McDermott?
All right, yeah, to move this along, I would make a motion that staff simply study what the other municipalities are doing and whether it's something can do or can't do. Like he mentioned about three municipalities that have a more broader group. And just a simple report on how they, how they function and whether it's something that we can do in Perth County or it would be problematic.
Councillor Orr?
No, I was exactly going to say that. I'd like to see what the other municipalities are doing. I'm not opposed to it, but then again, when do you stop and who else would like to come on? I would support that motion.
Thank you.
With respect to that motion, I would like to mention that Grain Farmers of Ontario is represented by all three of the neighboring counties. But certainly, when staff come back to do reporting, hopefully you'll find the same.
Any other councillors want to weigh in on this? Seeing none?
Great. So through the order and the resolution, we read that council receives the presentation from District Nine, Perth Grain Farmers of Ontario District Committee, Josh Borson, Director. And that council or further request from the District Nine, Perth Grain Farmers of Ontario District Committee to staff for review of the composition of the Perth County Agricultural Working Group with comparison to neighboring municipalities.
It's moved by councillor McDermott and seconded by councillor Orr. Questions or comments? All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Warden Kellum.
Okay, so moving on to our agenda, staff report. With the CAO. Eight point one, one, health and safety policy statements. And I believe Crystal's joining us. Welcome.
Good morning, Warden Kellum and members of county council. The report before you pertains to the county's health and safety policy statement. On an annual basis, the Joint Health and Safety Committee, along with the management team, we review this statement and make any necessary changes. The report outlines no significant changes to the policy other than position titles that have been updated, that you will note at the bottom of the statement. So we're asking council today to approve the two thousand and twenty-five health and safety policy statement as written. And I look forward to continuing to work with the management team to foster a health and safety or a workplace that's healthy and safe for all. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. So questions or comments for Crystal? Seeing none, that motion reads as follows. A council receives the two thousand and twenty-five health and safety policy statement, statement report. And a council approves the two thousand and twenty-five health and safety policy statement. Moved by councillor Smith, seconded by councillor McKenzie. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
To planning services. Twenty-four planning division update. Lee Bandry is joining us here. Hello, Commander.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. So I just wanted to provide a brief update on the planning slides for two thousand and twenty-four. And so we've gotten all of our numbers for all of our applications over the past year. So I wanted to share that with council. So as you can see, the planning applications have increased from two thousand and twenty-three, from one hundred and ninety-two applications overall to two hundred and twenty-two. And then I have provided also a breakdown of the types of applications. You can see just the variation between what's, what's increasing. So for example, site plan control. And as we continue to experience more growth, we will be seeing probably more site plan applications regularly. So we expect those to continue to increase. Those, for your information, require a significant amount of review from both municipal and planning staff. And depending on the type of application, it can go back and forth several times. So I believe it was when I first arrived, so almost two years ago, we did an exercise or we did a fees review and we tracked all the number of hours that all staff had been putting into all applications and tried to create a fee that was representative of the number of hours that people were putting into each application. So we'll continue to monitor those, those hours. And we have planned a meeting with all of the local treasurers come September to review all of that, to make sure that everyone agrees that the planning application fees are adequate. And if not, we will, council will obviously hear about any, any suggested changes. And let's shake both back for a second. You can see also that North Perth and Perth East have the most significant number of applications. Perth East has increased significantly. And I'm sure at all of your local councils, you're seeing that with planning applications coming forward regularly. And then we have continually tracked all of the planning application times. So from the moment that we receive the application, we start a counter. So we can report back at any given time on how many days we've had the application in queue for and then how many days it takes to get to council. And so with that, I am happy to, to share with you that we continue to meet the statutory time requirements under the Planning Act. And and despite the fact that the applications are, tend to be more complex than they have been in the past with respect to official plan amendments and draft plans and subdivisions, we still are meeting our statutory time requirements. So that's great news. In addition to that, we have a couple of side development planning projects that kind of separate out our work between development planning and policy planning. And so with respect to development planning projects, we are in the process of launching our planning application status and public information webpage. And I've shared with council a couple of times that that's, that's coming down the bank. And I'm happy to announce that that's even closer these days. We also are working on consolidating all the lower tier official plans. I think there were a couple of official plans that hadn't been consolidated since the mid-two thousands. And so that's, that's, we've already completed, I believe, North Perth. And we continue to work through those. Just for council's information, all of those official plan amendments that happened at the lower tier or for the lower tier official plans were accounted for and are proposed in the draft OP that's, that's with the province right now. And so we, we captured those. But in the interim, while we still continue to use our current OPs, we thought it would be best to consolidate everything. So everything's as up to date as possible, so things don't get missed. And then we've also done, I guess I'm skipping ahead, but we also, as you probably all know, it should be coming to your council as well in the next week or two. We are doing all of the housekeeping amendments for all the lower tier zoning bylaws. And then you'll also see the terms of reference for the, for comprehensive zoning bylaw reviews coming shortly as well. We also were able to standardize all our land division, sorry, land division and subdivision conditions. So that when you read a report and you look at the conditions, they're consistent and it's identical wording. So there's no question as to why this report has this condition and this one has this one. And they're trying to achieve the same thing. And then the other thing that we're doing is we're working with each of your, your CAOs and your municipal staff to update all of the planning application forms. All of them probably could use a refresh. And then in terms of requiring or having complete application submissions, we feel that if the applications are up to date, we should have a better, a better shot of having more complete application submissions and not having to go back and forth to applicants. And then, as I touched on already, the draft official plan is of the province. We've been back and forth with the province. So far, there haven't been any major issues that, that we're anticipating. But as council is aware, we're looking at, at an upcoming election. And then with that is generally cabinets shuffle. And then they, they would re, I don't even know all the right wording right now. But so once the cabinet shuffles occur, then they can start the work again on the OP review. So basically, anything that we send off to the province for now is kind of, it just goes in a pile, which is, is what they told me yesterday. So, and then with respect to any sort of ongoing projects, when, as time allows, staff are all required, planning staff are required to maintain our professional designations. So we have to do continuous professional learning. So we were able to all get our professional learning hours in last year and continue to do that. And then we attended a number of the ACTDA events at each of the lower tier municipalities. And then we are working closely with GIS at this point in time. This I didn't add in the report, but I just thought of it, in terms of establishing some monitoring and tracking systems. So that would be for our vacant and underutilized sites with, within the county, which will help inform our next comprehensive review. And then we're also working on a tracking system for planning applications as well. So with that, that is my update from two thousand and twenty-four. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, council. Questions or comments for Andrew?
I know you weren't here in two thousand and nineteen. Would you have any kind of idea, like word two hundred and twenty-two? Would you have any idea what it would have been in maybe two thousand and nineteen?
Through the word into the question, I, I can, next time I do an update or I could send an email out to council, because we have all of those numbers. But I do believe it was probably a bit higher in two thousand and nineteen based on like general trends that I'm familiar with. But I don't have that exact number, but I can definitely get it for you.
Oh, that's quite fun. I just wondered if, obviously, there was a time there that time disappeared. So I just wondered if we were back up to where we once were or way ahead of where we once were. No, that's fine. You don't have to, you don't have to get that number. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors have questions or comments? Deputy Warden Trunkowski?
Thanks, Warden Kellum, through you. Thanks, Andrea, for your report. And thanks to you, you and your staff for your dedication and hard work in your department. Two questions. I guess the first question is, do you see in the future a need for additional planning staff? And in terms of the volume of applications coming through? Second question, do you, can you give council a sense in terms of your professional development hours? Either the total hours required by your department for professional development or, or just an average per, per member in the department? I realize junior members may not need as many professional development hours as the senior staff, or maybe it's the other way around. But I was just curious to learn more about that aspect of your, of your work.
Okay, so through the word to those questions. So with respect to our need for additional staff, we, with respect to the comprehensive zoning bylaw reviews, we have put a request in for point four. One of our staff members is currently completing her graduate degree in planning. And so we have requested that point four, which would offset the number of hours that she is out of the office. The zoning bylaws are required under the Planning Act to be updated within three years of a new official plan. And although we don't have an approved official plan by the province, we've tried to jumpstart that so that we can meet those time requirements. If there was a need for any additional staff, or sorry, so we are anticipating that it'll take us anywhere between two and three years. And to be completely honest with council, a lot of municipalities hire consultants to undertake comprehensive zoning bylaw reviews. They do require a significant amount of work. And so that's why we've kind of given ourselves the two to three years. We're hopeful that we could complete them in that time. But the other thing too is zoning bylaws will require, it's, it requires a significant amount of public consultation. But, uh, the other thing too is zoning bylaws will require, it's, it requires a significant amount of public consultation. And collaboration. So there, there's that, um, that requirement as well. And so I would say if there were additional need for staff requirements. It would be with respect to the comprehensive zoning bylaw reviews. Um, and it would likely be a request perhaps at some point in time. They were, um, for a contract position so that we could, we could complete those. And then with respect to the second question. Uh, so the continuous professional, uh, learning hours that are required is eighteen hours. Uh, over the course of the year per planner. And we have, um, candidate members and we have full members. But we're all required to undertake the same number of professional learning hours. And nine of them are to be self-led. And so it could be, um, anything from just attending, um. A meeting that, uh, and I attend a lot of meetings with the, there's the county planning directors. There's also the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus Planning Group. And I'm also part of the Development Directors of Ontario Group. And so some of those hours where we're collaborating and sharing ideas and whatnot, I can use those hours. Um, and then the other, other nine hours are supposed to be structured learning hours. So we would have to attend conferences or, um. Or structured webinars where we know that, uh, we can get the, the number of hours in. Some of them will say that they're sanctioned, um, Ontario Professional Planning Institute. CPL hours so that we can, we can achieve those. And we are required to, um, report them all to our professional organization.
Thank you. Councilor Duncan?
Yeah, through you, Warden Kellum. Andrea. Seeing it's going to take possibly two to three years to go through the comprehensive zoning bylaws. If a policy in a zoning bylaw didn't align with an official plan policy. What would be the process if an applicant came and those two components didn't align? Would they have to apply for his only bylaw amendment then at that point?
So through the warden to, to the question, yes, they would be required to undertake a zoning bylaw amendment. Um, in those cases, we would obviously, you know, be supportive of the application. But it still has to go through that, that process.
So then that leads to more staff time processing zoning bylaw amendments. So I, I guess that's something council's gonna have to look at possibly as more staff here consultant to, to move that along a little quicker. Especially knowing that in five years, we're going to do an official plan review. So if it takes us three years to go through a comprehensive zoning bylaw and then two years later, we're going to do a review, we might have to start all over again. I, I think we're gonna have to look seriously at, at trying to move that along a little quicker. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Deputy Warden from Towsky.
Uh, thanks, Warden through you. I just wanted to follow up on Counselor Duncan's comment. When the next, uh, review of the official plan is done, five years after it's accepted. What, I guess the question's directed to Andrea. Would, would she anticipate, um, is it just at that point, is it just kind of minor amendments and updating? Um, as opposed to a major overhaul of the official plan? Um, like surely it's not, the, the next review of the official plan is not going to be. As exhaustive as the, uh, the previous, uh, exercise was.
Through the warden to the question, so typically what we would do is we would do an update to the official plan at the five-year mark. And so you're right, uh, Deputy Warden, is that it would be more of an update. It wouldn't be an overhaul like we did this time around. Um, and then in, in ten, at the ten-year marker is when we take a look and do a more comprehensive official plan review. Um, so in terms of, we, in the, in the context of zoning bylaws. After the five-year review, we would again do a review of the zoning bylaws. But, uh, based on, on the age of, of all of those documents, the, the zoning bylaws as well as, as the existing official plans. We wouldn't have to play as much alcohol catch-up as we have this time around. So I don't anticipate as significant amount of, as, um, work that, that time around.
Counselor?
I just wanted to commend Andrea and her team. Um, I look at planning this past year and I think you've done an incredible job. And you have remained professional in some difficult circumstances. And I, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done for the county. I'm impressed.
It's Counselor. What else? Seeing none again, thank you, council, for your questions and comments. And thank you, Andrea, for your report. We do have a resolution that reads as follows, council, that council receives the twenty twenty-four planning division update report or information. Moved by Counselor Aggitt, second by Counselor Duncan. All those in favor? And that is carried. Even on our agenda, eight point three, economic development and tourism, Director of Economic Development. We have Meredith Forjay and someone online as well and. Michael Grant?
Yes.
Good morning. Um, before I pass, uh, everything off to Michael, I just wanted to reintroduce Ricky Zhao to our team. Ricky has stepped into Clara's maternity leave, so he will be with us running tourism until March of twenty twenty-six. Uh, Ricky is a full-time student doing his master's in economic development at the University of Waterloo. So he was only part-time now until April eleventh. And then after April eleventh, he will be full-time here. So you'll see him popping in and out. Um, just so we're just introducing this project, um, to better understand the impact of our efforts. As you know, tourism was only eight years old in Perth County. And there was funding through the, the regional tourism organization, number four. We have spent the last nine months working with Forum Research, um, on an economic impact study for tourism. So tourism is just part of our economic landscape. Perth County is powered by thriving agricultural sector, two thousand farms, five hundred thousand acres. Generating one point two billion cash farm receipts. Manufacturing is also another major economic driver, employing nearly eight thousand people and two hundred and thirty-six businesses. Specializing from everything from automotive components, food processing, animal pharmaceuticals, metal fabrication, to name a few. Together, these industries make Perth County a strong, diverse economic hub. To present the findings today on the tourism economic impact. I have Michael Grant here from Forum Research and he's going to walk us through the data and the key takeaways. So over to you, Michael.
Thank you, Meredith. Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, Meredith, are, are people, if I share my screen, are they going to be able to see these slides or how do you want to do the slides?
I hope so. If not, we can do it here.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'll try to share my screen and let's, let's see how it works. Can everybody see that?
It's saying that you started sharing your screen.
Okay.
Yep, it's up now.
It's up now?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, uh, thanks for that introduction, Meredith. Um, I'm the, my name's Michael Grant. I'm the Chief Economist at Forum Research. We're a Toronto-based research company. Engaged by Perth County to do an economic impact analysis of tourism. And that's what I'm going to be presenting to you today. I'm going to walk through, uh, our methodology for doing this study. Uh, what the key findings were focusing specifically on the economics of, of the, our study. Because we also looked at some other things as I'll explain. Uh, and then, uh, at the end, I'm going to take some questions. Now, I've, I've been told that. About, uh, I guess ten minutes to do the presentation and then I'll take questions at the end. Okay, so economic, whoops, sorry, uh, economic impact. What is an economic impact? I think the most important thing to understand when we're looking at economic impacts. Is we're looking at this concept of value added. Uh, as opposed to sales, it's, it's a different idea. If I can use the, for instance, I know agriculture is a big deal in Perth County. If you're looking at, for instance, a farm, the sales of the farm will include all the inputs that the farm uses. So the fertilizer, the seeds, et cetera, even the accounting services that a farm will use. Those are all incorporated into the prices that the farmer will charge. Uh, whereas the value added of the farm itself are just its own costs. So that's all the machinery, the seeds, the fertilizer, the farm buildings, et cetera, et cetera, the capital. Uh, so when we look at an economic impact analysis, we're interested in the value added. In other words, at the point of sale, uh, that, those are the direct impacts. We're also interested in the indirect impacts, but only in as much as those impacts. Uh, those are, those are the impacts of the suppliers. Only in as much as those impacts are actually within the jurisdiction that we're looking at. And some of many of those, those impacts are actually realized outside of the jurisdiction because the supply chains go outside of the jurisdiction. Then we have a third, uh, range of impacts which are called induced. So the direct and indirect that are located within the jurisdiction. They will earn income and they will pay their factors of production, mainly wages, but also capital. Those are, go on to be spent in the surrounding economy and that's the induced impact. We have a model that calculates all this. And what we're trying to do in this model is to gauge spending and translate spending into value added.
Thank you.
Patient for a bit, see if he gets back on.
I can skip to the next present. I can do my next staff report if you'd like, and then we can move back to Michael if you want.
He's off soon.
So I'm going to try and keep this, this update brief, uh, in case Michael comes back on. So one of our key initiatives, um, is our Prosperant Perth County Program, which brings all of our business retention and expansion efforts under one umbrella. We've created a program guide to help businesses navigate the available resources. Uh, and continue supporting them through business visits, surveys, newsletters, networking events, training sessions. And our Planted in Perth County business features. Our twenty twenty-four annual business check-in highlighted ongoing challenges in workforce recruitment, particularly attracting skilled professionals. In response to that, we are, uh, improving our job board efforts and expanding our business support services. On an investment front, Perth County continues to attract significant businesses through international trade shows and collaborations. With the Southwestern Ontario Marketing Alliance, the Ontario Food Cluster and the Ontario Manufacturing Alliance. We've also submitted a can export application to support updated marketing materials, the attendance in six trade shows, two trade missions. One in automotive to Japan this spring and one in agriculture to Germany in the fall with Invest Trafford. We're currently managing thirteen investment and expansion files. These projects include everything from warehousing, distribution, industrial land development, equipment upgrading and diversifying operations. These will bring new manufacturing jobs and strengthen our local supply chains. The total estimated cost of these investments and projects is eighty million dollars. Some of these projects are currently in the, waiting for a funding stage or, uh, approval stage. Also, our investment attraction efforts generated over a hundred and fifty business leads in twenty twenty-four. And we're actively tracking over twenty-five hundred prospects. We continue to work with Invest Ontario, promoting our industrial land developments, connecting businesses with landowners and our municipal partners. We continue to support businesses with tools like our workforce attraction retention employer toolkit, which provides best practices for recruitment and retention. We've revived and updated our career pathways program from twenty eighteen. This program introduces students to agriculture, tutors and manufacturing career pathways. We've, uh, we had, because Ricky, um, is a teacher, is a certified teacher, um, who's now getting into economic development. We utilize those assets. So, um, in addition to providing the career pathway materials. We also provided lesson plans, worksheets for the teachers. And we've always, we've already had a, a significant uptake and interest from our local careers teachers of using the program. Because it's a, a turnkey, turnkey program that Ricky has created. So, um, it's given us quite a bit of street cred in, with our educational partners. We're also exploring a pilot with SET seven in North Perth to expand our welcoming communities training program to residents, not just business. And offer group training sessions, um, and utilizing the SET seven facility. Tourism is shaping up to be a really exciting year. We've got a fresh revamped tourism brochure that we'll be launching in the spring during Tourism Week. Our Discover More Adventures program is seeing increased demand. This competitive application-based program ensures high-quality experiences that showcase the best of Perth County. We've introduced experiential tourism training this year, um, and provided this opportunity to all businesses that are interested, interested in creating an immersive experience. Our Shareworthy Moments initiative is expanded, is an extension of our Discover More Adventures. And a pilot initiative for twenty twenty-four. We'll have ten semi-permanent metal photo frames at different locations across the county, encouraging, encouraging visitors to snap photos and share. The Discover More Flavor program continues to highlight our strong, rich air tourism and culinary programming. The updated Farmgate map featuring over ninety local farm vendors will be launched during Food Week in June. A new initiative that checks a lot of boxes, uh, from our programming across economic development and tourism is our Farm Stand Pilot Program. We're working with, uh, three local high schools, uh, shop classes and their students are designing ten farm stands. And local art students will be designing visuals for the farm stands that represent Perth County. This initiative encourages community engagement, promotes skilled trades, encourages youth retention and creates a sense of community pride. The wind down for PC Connect is currently underway. Justin has been working with our partners and service provider to ensure a smooth transition. We're gradually ramping up, uh, our public communication, um, with increased social media, bust-off notices. And direct outreach to riders and partner organizations as we end this program. So I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Hey, Meredith, you have a lot going on.
Yes.
Questions or comments? We'll start with, uh, Counselor Orr.
Yes, good morning. Uh, again, I want to say kudos to our economic development team. Um, I really get the sense that they are building relationships, um, not only in the county, but the southwestern Ontario, all around the world. And I'm encouraged that they are bringing investments to our area. I wonder, uh, Meredith, if you could a- answer this. How can we as counselors support you in bringing developments to our area?
Well, thank you, Counselor. Um, excellent question. I think one thing, like, um, one thing that county council can do is to continue to advocate for supports for local rural communities like Perth County. So whether that be infrastructure improvements, transportation, broadband, um, rural programming and policies around, uh, support, uh, housing. Uh, attainable and affordable housing, um, as well as when they're making, when policies are hiring in regards to funding and supporting rural economic development tourism programs. Um, attending our business tours and participating in our events goes a long way with our, our current businesses. And, uh, and potential new businesses, uh, that's always appreciated. I think just being involved in continuing what you're doing and every opportunity you get, uh, with an MP or an MPP. To, uh, you know, pro- promote Perth County as being a great place to live, work and play. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from counselors? Deputy Warden from Towsky.
Thanks, Warden through you. Um, to dovetail into Counselor Orr's comment. Yeah, uh, fantastic job. I was, uh, it, it's a term I use sometimes. I was blown away, um, and quite impressed and excited with the, uh, the lesson plan that Ricky had put together. Um, for the grade ten career pathways, um, initiative. Um, I know at, uh, West Perth, we've been trying to engage, uh, trying our best to engage the school, school board. And in particular, the high school to, uh. Get the, get the educators and the employers, uh, connected together to come up with, uh. Um, a strategy, um, that satisfies youth retention, um, in the area. But also satisfies employers' needs for skilled workers, skilled and trained workers. So I was quite excited to see, um, that, uh. As part of, uh, the report from economic development. And, uh, I can't help but notice that, uh, uh, it really underscores the need. When we develop these programs and come up with these ideas and concepts, our sta- when our staff does this, it really emphasizes how important it is. That, uh, um, our staff are given the tools, the ability to learn skills. And, um, develop as, uh, staff members, um, so that they can, uh, provide these deliverables, um, these kind of programming. It's, it, it's. it's, it's great to see our, our staff really maximizing their potential. So, thank you.
Deputy Warden, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion reads as follows. The council receives the Economic Development and Tourism Q1 Update February 2025 Report for Information. Moved by Council McDermott and seconded by Councilor Egans. All those in favor? And that is carried. Rachel, have we found Michael yet to our? I guess if he does come back.
Can we continue and then come back? Is that okay?
That is fine. So moving on to the agenda, we move on to Public Services and Corporate Service Services. First, your report? Thank you. So. One more please. Michael's back, but we can.
I have no idea how much you saw. It, it just failed on me.
So just one second, Michael. We, we moved on in the agenda. Just going to present our report and then we'll jump back to you, okay?
Yeah, okay, that's great. Sorry about that.
Thank you. So through the Warden, before council is the December 2024 Forestry Inspector's Report, presented by myself on behalf of Marvin Smith, our Forestry Inspector. With that being said, in the month of December, Marvin completed a number of inspections in response to submission of a notice of intent. One of those inspections was by request of a landowner and one inspection response of a complaint. If there's any questions, concerns, or inquiries, it would be happy to pass those along to Marvin.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Tyler? Seeing none, the motion reads as follows. The council receives the December 2024 Forestry Inspector's Report for Information. Moved by Council McDermott, seconded by Councilor Duncan. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Okay, we'll get back to Michael. I'm not sure how.
How, how far did you actually get? How far did I actually get into this thing?
We got to you, the second slide when you're explaining your tour force model.
Oh, my God.
Quite early, yes.
Well, I spent a lot of time talking to myself. Which I often do. Okay, let, let's, okay, I'll go to that slide and we can just take from there. Hopefully it will continue to work. Okay, let me go here. Okay, let me go to this side. So we finished here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So this is the, this is the model that, that converts spending into value added. Did, did I explain what value added is? Did you hear that part?
We were just getting into that, I think.
Well, you were, okay. I, 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 this is, this is the most important concept. I understand that the whole presentation is value added. And why, why value added is not the same as sales. Sales includes all inputs that an enterprise will have. So if I, I was using the example of a farm. In a farm, they'll have, they'll have seed, they'll have fertilizer, they'll use accounting services and this sort of thing. That's not the value added to the farm. The value added to the farm is related to the labor on the farm and the machinery in the buildings. Right? So value added is only that component which is related to the capital and labor that are employed by the enterprise. The supply chain is not part of that value added. So that's an important concept to understand when we're looking at economic impact analysis. So what we do is we take spending patterns and we apply it into a model that converts it into value added in the jurisdiction. It's important to understand this is for it within the jurisdiction that we're mostly interested. Okay. So now there's different ways you can do this. The, the preferable way is, is to collect original data. You can, you can use Stats Canada data, but the Stats Canada data is not very good for sub-jurisdictions like Perth County. So we're better off collecting original data, which is what we did. And we did it through an, through an intercept survey. An intercept survey, we send people out in the field with tablets and they, as the name suggests, intercept tourists and ask them various things about who they are and how much money they're spending and this sort of thing. Now, we're, we're, we're surveying these people during high season. So I have to be able to take that data that we collect during that week or so period that we're, we're surveying tourists and translated for the rest of the year. But so what I basically do is I take that as a visitor profile, how much they spend. I have other data that we have from RTO four, for instance, on cell phone data that gives us the flows, the volumes during the year. And then I take that visitor profile and expand it using that other data and I get an estimate for the year. So we also did some focus groups to talk to the people that were in the tourism sector that are actually catering to these tourists. Try to understand what their constraints are, how optimistic they were about tourism and this sort of thing. So we end up, because we do an intercept survey, we end up with quite a bit of data in terms of the demographics of the tourists. And you can see that you can see the age group, you can see the gender identity of, of the tourists. This is from the, this is from the actual intercept survey. I wouldn't necessarily take all these things as being a hundred percent accurate because we're only looking at for, for, for a period of a week or so. So we could end up with some sampling bias during that week. I, I find the, the results on females are probably a little bit too skewed. But I, I, I think the visitor or, or origin is actually a very good number and it's actually backed up by the cell phone data. And the reason I focus on that number is because there's a big difference between net and gross economic impact. If you're bringing in spending from other jurisdictions, you're going to create a bigger net economic impact than if you're catering to tourists within your jurisdiction. Because if you're catering to tourists within your jurisdiction, you're just taking money that would have been spent in other ways in the jurisdiction and applying to tourism. You actually have, when we look at it from your perspective, you're actually bringing in quite a bit of money from other jurisdictions and that's creates a larger net economic impact. Here's some trip group characteristics. I don't have to go into a lot of details about this. You can read the slide. You know, adults without children. Once again, this is based on the intercept survey findings. Okay. We, in our estimate, we came up with ninety million dollars in total spending, which is the thing that really drives economic impact. And you can see the allocation of the spending between the various types of things that tourists are spending on. Now, this is important because we're not just shocking the model or stimulating the model for aggregate spending because that wouldn't produce a very good result. Each one of these supply chains, these sector supply chains, have a different sort of way of creating value added in the jurisdiction. So that's why we have to break it out by, by different things that, that tourists are spending money on, transportation, retail shop, et cetera, et cetera. You can see them all in the slide. Right? Because there's different processes there for creating value added. Um, so now, okay, what did that ninety million dollars do? Well, it created directed impacts. These are impacts at the point of sale. So they will be at the restaurant, it will be at the hotel, et cetera. At the point of sale, the direct impact was forty-eight point four million dollars per annum. The indirect impacts, well, those are in the supply chain. But frankly, most of the supply chain is outside of the county. So that's why you get a, a fairly muted impact in terms of the indirect impacts. And then the induced impacts, those emerge over time. When the direct and indirect within the jurisdiction pay wages, pay the owners dividends, and those are in turn spent in the, in the county, that produces a further induced impact. That's on the slide. We broke out the direct, the, this is the direct economic impact by sector. I think the most interesting thing about this slide is that even though the spending in food and beverage is higher than accommodation, the economic impact is higher in accommodation because accommodation has more of its value added that's created in the county, whereas food and beverage is more dependent on bringing in, bringing in products into their supply chain to serve customers. We can, this model allows us to, to look at the different, what we call factor payments. And there's three types of factor payments. One is called wages, the other one's called, they, it, it was called operating surplus, which is basically equivalent of profits, but not for profits or just a surplus. And then there's something called mixed income, which is, which is unincorporated businesses, which is a combination of wages and, and basically payments for capital. So this is the wage component. So the, in terms of the direct impact, you get thirty million dollars of wages, indirect ten point eight, and induced an additional ten point two million. Now, once we have wages, we can go from wages to employment. So when we're looking at, this is FTE, which is full-time equivalent jobs. So we know how many hours people work full-time. So all we have to do is take that wage component, apply the number of hours that people work full-time, and we get the number of jobs. That's how that's calculated. And we end up with seven hundred and five direct jobs through this sort of spending. And then you can see the other type, impacts in terms of indirect and induced jobs. Of course, the taxes are run off of economic activity. More economic activity, higher tax revenue. So the model also allows us to compute what the tax revenue will be. Some of this is directly in the input-output tables. Anything that has to do with sales taxes, excise taxes, this sort of thing. Other parts of it, we have to compute outside of the input-output tables based on the tax structure in Ontario. We know what the relationships are between GDP and taxes at the federal, provincial, and local levels. And then we, because we know what that structure of taxation is, we can then, in addition to looking at sales and we can compute other sort of taxes. Of course, the, the major one for municipalities is property tax. But there's other charges that municipalities have for licenses and, and this sort of thing. But the main one is property taxes. Because we know the tax structure, the revenue structure, we know the relationship between GDP creation and taxes. We can then calculate what the tax effect is at the various levels of government. Okay, that's my presentation. Thank you for listening to me. I'm, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Michael. Counsel, any questions or comments for him? Counsel McDermott?
Yeah, on page seventy-two, you showed that how people got here, where they stayed, that RVs were thirty-four percent of accommodations, and I've found that very interesting.
Yes, or did I?
I, I'm just wondering where they're staying, that's all.
Well, yeah, that's a good question. I mean, obviously there's various sort of camping facilities, right, that people can park RVs at. And even at cottages, sometimes they'll be, they could be staying at, at a cottage that's even not, they could be staying at people's farms, even parking their RVs there. They'll stay at other people's homes and park their RVs. You know, it's not, you know, there, there's all kinds of things that they'll do, but that's what they said. So that's what we calculated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you, Michael, for your presentation. Those are incredible numbers. You know, we have the, happy about our economic development team here and those numbers wouldn't be there without the strong efforts that they put in each and every day. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. My apologies for the technical glitches along the way.
No worries, no worries. So motion that reads as follows. The council receives the economic impact of tourism, Perth County Report for Information. Moved by Councilor Egans, seconded by Councilor Smith. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Page one eight point four point three, POA Court Services. Corporate Services, we have an F coming up. Report on, yeah, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, good morning. So this report speaks to activities within Corporate Services for the month of January. A few brief highlights. The Information and Privacy Commissioner, IPC Annual Reporting, has been filed. That's an annual report which is required and it was completed by Legislative Services. So thank you to the finalers team. Legislative Services also offered training on accessible content for Perth County's website. Nineteen staff attended to learn more about how to format and create accessible web content. And this will assist with respect to ensuring compliance going forward. Speaking of accessibility, outreach has begun for information to put into the 2024 Joint Annual Accessibility Report. This report is mandated as part of the accessibility program and information is correlated from all departments and from the lower tiers regarding accessibility initiatives that have been completed over the past year. For POAs, court staff have secured four additional Blitz Days for the first half of the year. You'll recall that Blitz Days are not regularly scheduled court dates, but rather they are additional dates that help to address the volume of cases. And finally, tomorrow is the Saint Mary's, Saint Mary's Heritage Fair. Assistant Archivist Megan Lockhart will represent Stratford Perth Archives at that fair with a display and information about Archives services. So I encourage you, if you are going, to stop by and say hello and take a look at the display that Archives has put together. Subject to any questions, that is my report.
Thank you for reporting that. Counsel, questions or comments for that? Seeing none, the motion reads as follows. The council receives the Corporate Services January 2025 Update Report for Information. Moved by Deputy Warden Trintowski and seconded by Counselor Orr. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Agenda, eight point four point three now, POA with Vicky.
Good morning, Warden Callum and members of council. The report before you today provides information on the transfer of Part Three prosecutions from the province to the municipalities. It is the recommendation of staff to proceed with the download of Part Three offenses from the province. Bill 177 passed in 2017, which included changes that permit the Attorney General to enter into agreements to transfer the responsibility for certain prosecutions to the municipality. Currently, municipalities are responsible for the prosecution of Part One and Part Two charges, which are less serious in nature. And the province is responsible for the prosecution, Part Three charges, which are more serious, and court appearances are mandatory. The ministry would continue to prosecute in certain charges resulting in serious bodily harm or fatality, as well as charges under Christopher's law. Perth County staff has had ongoing meetings with the Crown Attorney since 2022, with the most recent meeting being held last month. While the download is still optional, municipalities are feeling the pressure of the download from the province. Currently, the province covers prosecution time for prosecuting Part Three offenses. That transfer would shift the responsibility to the municipality, but the cost will be offset by the decrease in payments made to the Ministry of the Attorney General for prosecuting Part Three offenses in court. The cost of handling Part Three offenses was already factored into the salary calculations for the in-house prosecutor, so there is no impact on the budget. The revenue from fines associated with Part Three matters is already included in the revenue that is reported through the MSSC updates. The approval of the full-time prosecutor results in greater efficiencies, providing more time to manage Part Three offenses and allows for additional court preparation, which is why staff is now prepared for this transition to take place. It is the recommendation of staff to take on the download from the province, assuming the download provides program consistency and more efficient use of court time. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
You, Vicky. Counsel, questions or comments for them? Seeing none? Thank you. We do have a motion that reads as follows. The council receives the POA Court Services Download of Part Three offenses from the Province Report. The council directs staff to proceed with the download of Part Three offenses from the province. The council directs staff to sign any necessary agreements to implement the download. Moved by. Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Aggins. All those in favor, and that is Carrie. Thank you. On eight point four point four, Finance Director, Corey.
Thank you, Warden Kellam and council. Um, with the campus technically nearing, uh, our reach of significant completion. Uh, the current construction loan that we have with Infrastructure Ontario, uh, is looked to be converted into a, a long-term debenture, uh, as approved in the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, this report is for that approval, uh, and executing a debenture with Infrastructure Ontario for twenty-five-year, five point four million dollar, uh, with an interest rate of four point three five percent. Uh, if there's any questions related to the report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you for the report, Corey. Questions, comments from counselors? Counselor Aggins?
Uh, through you, Warden Kellam, is there an opportunity as time goes on, if the rates go down, that we can refinance that, or is it twenty-five years and it stays there?
So, so to, uh, through the word to Counselor Aggins, um, with the interest rate and being able to set it at a twenty-five-year rate, uh, there is no opportunity to refinance it at a lower rate. Uh, it's the, one of those things where, um, versus a, uh, normal mortgage you would have with a, only a five-year term or a seven-year term depending, uh, but the rate is, is very competitive in a, over, they, they look at those twenty-five-year period, uh, to set those, those rates for, uh, these type of, uh, but it also sets consistency for us to know what our payments are going to be and not be at a, this potential interest rate risk, uh, whether interest rates do increase significantly or decrease significantly. It's setting that rate, uh, with, uh, the province, uh, corporation, uh, to, to have a consistency over that twenty-five-year period.
I get that. It's too bad they don't farm credit, they offer that. I know that we can't go to farm credit, but it's too bad that they don't offer, because the rates go down to two percent, you're locked in. So you're, I get it, you're gambling whether they're gonna go up or down.
It, it, yeah, it's remove that interest rate risk, uh, of, uh, whether interest rates go up significantly or whether interest rates go down. Uh, it's setting that consistency, uh, with this over the, that twenty-five-year period. Uh, we've, we've done it with, uh, the other construction, uh, uh, projects that we do have in place, uh, and it's incomparable. Uh, I, I look to try to do it at, at the end of the project versus at the beginning of the project, which, with, where interest rates were a little higher. Uh, we've seen that interest rate have come down, uh, from, uh, saying debenturing it at the beginning of that project.
Yes, any further question then? If the, does the opportunity ever come, if you got extra money, and I'm not sure we'd ever do that, but if we had extra money to pay it out, can you do that?
There, there is, but there will be a, a penalty to do so.
Wow.
Good questions, Counsel. I had the same. I asked according before, four point three five is, it's a good rate right now. It sure is, sure is. Any other counselors? Seeing none, the motion reads as follows, council receives the twenty twenty-five debenture courthouse campus connecting link report, and the council passed bylaw number four zero one seven dash twenty twenty-five to authorize Infrastructure Ontario issue a debenture for five point four million dollars for the courthouse campus, connecting link renovation, and the council authorized the warden, clerk and treasurer to fix their signatures, corporate seal to the debenture. Move by. Counsel McDermott, seconded by Counsel Duncan, all those in favor? That is Carrie. Thanks, Corey. Moving on to paramedic services? All the Mike and Tristan.
Good morning, uh, Warden, and, and members of council. Uh, through the warden, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present this report regarding the single-source purchase of a replacement Stryker, uh, Power Pro X T stretcher. Uh, this purchase is critical for, uh, maintaining operational efficiency and ensuring paramedic and patient safety. Perth County Paramedic Services exclusively uses, exclusively uses, uh, Stryker Power Pro X T stretchers across her fleet. Uh, these stretchers are fully compatible, compatible with our power load systems, uh, which enhance paramedic safety and reduce, uh, workplace injuries by minimizing manual lifting. Unfortunately, uh, Stryker has discontinued the Power Pro X T model, and new purchases, uh, directly, uh, from Stryker are no longer possible. However, uh, Roland Emergency has a remaining stock of these stretchers, uh, that were purchased before, uh, the discontinuation. So, uh, why a single-source purchase, uh, for consistency and compatibility, ensuring uniformity across our fleet is crucial. Having a mix of different stretchers could, uh, introduce operational challenges, training issues and potential safety concerns. Uh, operational efficiency, purchasing the same model means paramedics do not have to adjust uh, to different equipment, uh, reducing the risk of errors in patient handling. Uh, safety and ergonomics, these stretchers are, uh, designed to reduce physical strain on paramedics, helping prevent workplace injuries. Uh, within, uh, the Perth County, uh, bylaw, um, two six three one dash, uh, two thousand seventeen, Schedule E allows for single-source purchase when compatibility with existing equipment is of paramount consideration. Uh, this purchase aligns with that policy by ensuring stretchers in the fleet remain the same model. Uh, the cost of one, uh, Stryker Power Pro X, uh, X T replacement stretcher, uh, is thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty tax. Uh, this expense is already allotted for within the twenty twenty-five capital budget, meaning no additional funding is required. Uh, this purchase aligns with the county strategic plan by standardizing equipment across our fleet for efficiency and safety, uh, enhancing customer service excellence by ensuring patients receive consistent, high-quality care, um, and by supporting, uh, corporate sustainability by investing in equipment that aligns with our existing infrastructure. Um, given the critical, uh, importance of of maintaining compatibility, compatibility, efficiency and safety for the County Paramedic Services that, uh, recommend, the council approved a single-source purchase of one Power Pro X T stretcher from Roland Emergency. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm happy to receive any questions.
Thank you for the report, Charles. Counsel, questions or comments for this? Counselor McKenzie?
What, what's the life expectancy of these stretchers?
Uh, seven years.
Seven years. I, I guess, you know, I, I, I know where you're coming from, but down the road, we're going to be stuck with a bunch of inadequate stretchers anyway.
Um, so kind, through the warden, um, this, uh, these particular stretchers were commitment that were made even prior to my time where we were putting in stretchers that, um, can automatically lift, that reduce injuries of paramedics. And as a team in terms of, uh, the previous, um, uh, chief and, uh, council committed to going with this model because of the reduction of injuries and those types of things. And so they do have a seven-year recy, um, replacement cycle, which is well-aligned with our ambulance seven-year, uh, replacement cycle. And the reason why we're also here today, uh, presenting this to you prior to budget being, um, uh, passed is that we have ambulances that are going to be delivered, and we would like to be able to have that stretcher in the ambulance ready to go. Like, it makes sense that we have that because it's, this is now, I believe, our first replacement of, um, one of our very first prototypes that we had purchased about seven years ago, so we're actually into that replacement cycle.
Well, eventually, they are gonna be outdated and we're gonna have to change. And, and I, you know, I assume you know what's out there, you know, the future to replace them.
Yes, uh, to further clarify, um, uh, through the warden, um, so Stryker, um, it has has currently, uh, produced, uh, a new stretcher that is called the Power Pro Two, um, that is available. I think that is essentially the replacement stretcher for the Power Pro X T. Um, that stretcher is compatible, um, with the power load systems that are in the truck. So we don't have any stretcher replacements, um, allotted for until after this one, until twenty twenty-seven. So at the time in twenty twenty-seven, when we begin to, um, replace, um, those stretchers in those ambulances, I will be looking at that Power Pro Two stretcher, which, which is compatible, that is brand-new on the market. Um, and for the time being, we, our recommendation is to keep our fleet of stretchers the exact same, which is why the recommendation is to, to purchase this X T at this time.
Fair enough.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion reads as follows, the council receives the Stryker Power Pro X T stretcher, single-source purchase report. And the council directs staff to purchase one Stryker Power Pro X T stretcher through, through the single-source purchase process with Roland's Emergency. Move by. Counsel McDermott, seconded by Counselor Orr. All those in favor, and that is Carrie. Thank you. Eight point five point two, M I H Narcotic Control System Purchase. So we're just waiting for Chris to joining us, you presenting your report. Thank you.
It's accepted.
Yeah. Chris is online. As you move on from any tendency to a panelist, he just needs to accept it on his screen, so. Yeah, quick text message, sure.
So we'll do that. I can also start to present the report, um, just at times, so it's really warded. Um, and Chris, if you're, uh, watching, just try to accept the, uh, the, uh, panelist, uh, invitation. Um, so, uh, the report before you today, uh, is about a narcotic control system. This is a mobile integrated health initiative. And one of the things that, uh, we continue to work on in our community is, um, is to help our palliative care patients, end-of-life scenarios, uh, for persons in their home. And in order to do, um, that at the full, uh, scope and extent to which we would like to be able to do and, and to be able to support our, our, uh, patients in the population, um, it's really super important that we have, uh, that we have, um, a system that's in place to deal with, um, medications that are regulated, um, such as the products, and you know, you hear things like opioids, um, morphine, like those types of things, and so where we can fit in into our community is that we have programs already in place, but sometimes somebody might need support in the middle of the night to, um, provide themselves with a medication, um, and, uh, instead of going to the hospital, we would be able to, uh, just take care of them and, uh, release them back into their home, uh, as part of our mobile integrated health program. And that way, um, we reduce the time in, uh, required type in ambulances, reduce the time in the E D, and we better serve our, our population. And so with the money that we have within the, um, Ministry of Health, uh, um, a one-hundred percent funded, um, uh, program within, uh, Paramedic Service, we like a safe way to transport narcotics and store them. That involves us making sure that we, um, once we, uh, procure them or are provided with them, that we can store them in a place that has controlled access, we know who accesses them, and, uh, we're able to track all of the moves of the narcotics. This is a, a legislative requirement. But then also, if we're transporting them in one of our vehicles, that we'd be able to safely bring it to a scene or leave a scene. There are times in other places in the province if, if, uh, uh, persons that, um, for nefarious reasons, um, might, I know that paramedics are carrying these types of things, um, we want to make sure not only are we legislatively required to do things a certain way, we also want to make sure that we're doing it safely and that we are able to secure it. So we've identified a system, um, in fact, that, um, um, is used elsewhere in maybe health services. We've done some, um, initial work on that, and, um, we, uh, know that we'd be able to get the, um, there's a current contract that exists, we know that we'd be able to, um, leverage our purchasing bylaw in order to, um, uh, cooperatively purchase, uh, this system. So the system actually is to, to falls the software that will help us know where the medication is moving around, and then the other part is the physical assets that are like safes in our stations, um, and also in our vehicles. So, um, in order to do that, uh, we would leverage, um, the section of fourteen I I, which, uh, again talks about, um, leveraging existing purchase agreements, um, and then we would also look at, because we have, um, a couple of these, uh, safes already that we have procured at a lower amount, um, of money, because we've, uh, we've had to, I mean, keep this, um, medication in a few circumstances, um, in our paramedic, uh, station here, um, that we would just be consistent to that as well, which gives us the authority to, um, say that, um, we would like to purchase also under section fourteen G I one, which allows us to, uh, single-source when we have existing equipment, um, that would be, uh, standardized. Uh, so for those two reasons, um, we're here today to have councils, um, just looking at the resolution here, um, to have direction to, uh, single-source purchase of the NOX, um, narcotic control system. And I've been putting in a report not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars, however, we're actively in the process of, uh, getting a final quote, it will be less than that. And again, that's a hundred percent funded for our mobile integrated health, so it will not um, be at the direct, I recognize the ripple effect, but not the direct expense of our, uh, tax levy or, um, our constituents, it will be through the Ontario Health, um, L T Cs, Ontario Health Programs. Thank you for the report, Mike.
And I don't know, do keys ever get in, or, no, okay.
So I mean, explain it very well. All right, thanks. All right, counsel, questions or comments for Mike? Seeing none, thanks again. I do have a motion that reads as follows, the council receives the Narcotic Control System Purchase Report, and the council directs staff to single-source the purchase of NOX Narcotic Control System not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Move by. Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Smith. All those in favor? And that is Carrie.
Five to nine point nine, nine point one, we have the warden's activity report for January, where I was throughout the month. Questions for that?
Seeing none, the motion reads as follows, the council receives the warden's activity report, January twenty-five. Report for information. Move by. Counselor Aggins, seconded by Counselor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you. Moving on to bylaws. We have a bylaw motion, that bylaw four zero one seven twenty twenty-five, be read a first, second and third time, and finally pass this twentieth day of February, twenty twenty-five. Moved by Counselor Orr. Seconded by Deputy Warden Trantowski. Questions or comments? All those in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you. It's time, does any counselor wish to give notice of motion? Seeing none, other business? Moving on to announcements, any announcements that any council member would like to make to better Perth County? Couple, first one is, um, just like to say thank you to our Public Works, uh, department, not just them, I can't start to list names because, uh, there's just so many that were involved, whether it was the frontline, whether it was EMS, whether it was technicians, uh, it just went on and on. We haven't had a, a weather storm like this, uh, twenty-five into the seventies, but, uh, it's very well looked after and that. Appreciate everything that he did to, uh, to get us through, so, thank you very much. Also looking over at, uh, John McClellan, uh, there's a very big hockey game tonight, probably the biggest one that, uh, we'll see in many, many years, uh. My prediction is four-two Canada, empty matter, with a very strong tilt with Chuck and Doughty. Gold, Canada, gold. No other announcements? Okay. No other announcements? Okay, I guess we'll move into. Okay, so we have a motion that reads that Perth County Council will be in a closed session at approximately ten thirty-two AM in accordance with section two thirty-nine of Municipal Act SO two thousand and one. C twenty-five is amended to consider any legal litigation, negotiations or update from the CIO. A matter pertaining to labor relations, identical individual CIO. Matter pertaining to labor relations, identical, identi- individual CIO and.
Matter pertaining to identifiable individual, potential litigation, other works.
Thank you. Move by. Counsel McDermott, seconded by Counselor Aggins. All those in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you. We'd like you to take a six or seven minute comfort break, please, and we'll come back to. Okay, confirm that we're now back in regular council. I do have the confirmatory bylaw that reads as follows. The bylaw number four zero one eight dash two zero two five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of corporation of the county in Perth at its regular meeting on February twentieth, twenty twenty-five, is read first, second and third time, finally passed February twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Move by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor McDermott. All those in favor? And that is Carrie. And finally, the council meeting, meeting be adjourned at approximately eleven fifty-six AM. Move by Counselor Orr. Seconded by Deputy Warden Trintowski. All those in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you, everyone.